Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of August 24th, 2010. I'd like to thank the San Bruno Garden Club for the flowers they always provide, very nice. And I'd like to ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
And I see we have a big contingent of the San Bruno Storm here tonight, and I would like to ask their coach, Mr. Rodriguez, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start the meeting off with a couple of announcements. The San Bruno Chamber of Commerce will be hosting their third annual Taste of San Bruno event on Tuesday evening, August 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. right here at the Senior Center. Please contact the Chamber for tickets. Cost is $25 per person, and there's a lot of restaurants in San Bruno represented. It's a lot of fun. In conjunction with the weekly farmer's market, the San Bruno Culture and Arts Commission and the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce will be having an Art at the Market Walk from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. this Sunday, August 29th, right down in San Mateo Avenue. We have some presentations. Present certificates of achievement to members of the Storm. San Bruno's Girls 16 and Under N softball team winners of the Western National Championship Tournament in Hillsboro, Oregon on August the 8th, 2010. And this is fun stuff for the council. We're bogged down in budget things, which aren't fun at all, but when we hear about this fun stuff for the city, it's great to have you all here. I have presentation of certificates for all of you, but I'd like to read all of your names, then I'm going to present these to your coach, and he can give them to you individually. And whoever would like to say a few words, we'd like to hear from you. So, tonight representing the Storm, we have, let me see if I get all these right, Gina Marie Bonilla, Amanda Kotla, Nikki Delaney, Victoria Tori Yang, Alexandra Ali Fonseca, Amanda Labrato, Maria Uewano, Danielle Dani Marti, Jacey McDade, Kelly McDade, Jamie Navarro, Elena Rivia, Selena Rodriguez, Chia Santiago, and Jessica Shelton. Congratulations to all of you. Let me, a couple of highlights here. On August the 8th, the San Bruno Storm's 16 and Under B softball team won the Western National Championship Tournament in Hillsboro, Oregon. The tournament had 34 teams from Washington, Oregon, California, and Montana. The Storm went 6-1 in the tournament, beating Buena Park 6-5 in the championship game. They had a 33, 5, and 1 record for the season and won five of the seven tournaments they entered. In 2009, the Storm finished 3rd place at the Western Nationals. Congratulations once again.
Excellent, Coach.
Mayor Ruane and the members of the City Council, we'd like to, on behalf of the San Bruno Storm, we'd like to thank you for this honor you've bestowed on us tonight. I want to quote one of my coaches, Manny Kotla, where he said that "I had a vision two years ago," and that last year it was becoming a reality when this team, through injury, dehydration, and the heat in Lancaster, finished 3rd place overall. And then this year, we played our cards right, got a bigger roster in case we had any of those things happen. And we started with an 18-0 record before we lost our first game, and they just kept winning and winning, and like we said earlier, we won five of the seven tournaments. And that vision became a reality in Hillsboro, Oregon, and the girls became champions. And I'm proud to say, and I'm sure the parents are too, that we are happy to experience this achievement by the girls. I want to thank you very much.
Once again, congratulations.
How you doing? I'm Coach Manny Kotla with the team. It's actually been a longer journey. The girls started, a lot of them as 10-year-olds, and we've been to five different Nationals through the way, and this is the farthest San Bruno has ever gone. And we also, in appreciation, want to thank the Rec Department, everything that takes care of us up at Parkside School, and everybody in the community for just the support we've gotten since we've come back. I'd also like to leave a bunch of our pins, Storm pins, right here for you guys to go ahead and get, and flash around town if you may. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. Any other members of the team want to say anything? No?
Wow. Shy.
Just going to play ball. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Review of the agenda, item 5. We want to move item 11 to after item 8. Item 11 is to receive the annual report from the Redevelopment Advisory Committee. We'll do that after the public hearing. Approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting and San Bruno Redevelopment Agency of July 27th, 2010. Seeing no objection, any changes, admissions, additions. Minutes will stand approved as submitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implement an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by council member, citizen, or staff.
Move to pull item E.
Item E. Any other action?
Move to approve the rest.
Second.
Motion second to approve the remainder of the consent calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So carried. Item E is adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with San Mateo County's Aging and Adult Services Department Area Agency on Aging Program for the City of San Bruno's Congregate Nutrition and Transportation Programs. Vice Mayor?
Very quickly, I was just going to thank and acknowledge the volunteers and their fundraising efforts that have helped to fund the nutrition site managers, as well as the referral specialists, which helps take a burden off the taxpayer and the general fund. I just want to thank them for all of their efforts throughout the year. With that, I'll go ahead and move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve item E. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. We're going to have a, let me see, are we ready with the public hearing now, or you want to hold it on?
Mr. Mayor, if it meets the council's pleasure, we would request the opportunity to move the public hearing until after the business items. We are having a glitch in our PowerPoint tonight, which we think would be very useful for the benefit of particularly members of the audience who are not physically present here tonight. They'll be able to follow along a little easier with the PowerPoint. So if it's the council's pleasure, we would request moving the public hearing down a bit in the agenda tonight. We hope that does not inconvenience members of the audience who are present.
All right. We'll go to item number 11, Report of Commissions, Boards, and Committees. Have received the annual report from the Redevelopment Advisory Committee.
Well, Mark finds the PowerPoint. I'm Robert Rico, the current Chair of the Redevelopment Agent, Redevelopment Advisory Committee, and I'll be happy here in a minute to give you a short summary of our, that's our annual report. Okay, the next slide. Our current committee members are the committee members basically for the year 2009. Myself as Chair, Joan Skinner as Vice Chair, Harry Costa as a member, Ed Hoff, Marina Kaiser, John Coberson, Dan Strazula, Rico Medina is our council representative, and Mark Sullivan, Housing and Redevelopment Manager, is our city staff, a city staff person. We meet on the 3rd Wednesday every other month. We meet the odd-numbered months, so the next meeting will be 3rd Wednesday in September at 6:30 in City Hall. The purpose of the committee is to provide public oversight of redevelopment in San Bruno. We review annually how development activities have advanced the goals of the San Bruno redevelopment plan. Couple of the specific things that we did during 2009, two of our members were on the Steering Committee and participated extensively in the Transit Corridor Plan, which held, I believe it was five meetings, at the Farmers Hall on San Mateo Avenue. And we also provided input for the third five-year implementation plan, 2010 through 2014. We provided input on the San Bruno Restaurant Guide, which we published earlier in the year. And we also provided input on the Commercial Facade Improvement Program, and we have a couple before and after shots. On the left side is what used to be the old tire place, which is now a much better-looking besides probably more needed small market. And then 508 San Mateo Avenue, they did maybe a little less extensive facade improvement. We have on the next slide, a 446 San Mateo Avenue is a project that is in progress along with a two-storefront location, 589-591 San Mateo Avenue. And we, the city has approved participation of the facade program for 625 San Mateo Avenue, and I believe this is a before shot. We reviewed some of the happenings at the crossings, the, we looked at the specific, more in detail at Jacque's Restaurant, the new retail and restaurant that is almost completed on El Camino across from Tanforan, as far as the other two items listed there. The Transit Corridor Plan, the draft was released in July. The Steering Committee reviewed and provided comments on the draft plan. Environmental review has started, and there will be one, I believe there's two upcoming community workshops where the results of the Transit Corridor Committee, five meetings, will be presented to the citizens of San Bruno, and hopefully they will buy in, or at least not have major concerns about the work that the committee has done, so that that can go forward. The next slide lists the web address where the whole Transit Corridor Plan, it's five or six, no, I think it's seven or eight sections going through the, everything that the committee looked at, so the public can go through and see what we looked at and the input that we got. On the Transit Corridor Plan Committee, they took a walking tour of four or five of the blocks in San Mateo Avenue, Genovin, El Camino, one Saturday, and they basically looked at storefronts and locations and really had some real good discussions on what could be done, what don't people want in that area. So the, to go to the webpage, you can see the results of that. The goals for 2010, some of which we have started, there is still a little bit of 2010 left. We are going to continue to assist with the completion of the Transit Corridors Plan. We're going to continue to provide input on the ongoing facade projects and other redevelopment agencies. The one thing that is really easy to see when a facade project gets approved and gets completed, that's something that all the citizens can really see easily. Some of the other projects take years, and you wonder what is San Bruno doing with the facade improvement project. The results are easier to see, much quicker. We are staying informed about redevelopment activities and provide feedback to the agency. We continue to inform residents about redevelopment and the benefits to the community. And a couple last-minute things that we just wanted to really stress, the agency agrees that the redevelopment, or the committee agrees that the redevelopment agency is doing an excellent job in carrying out the redevelopment plans for the city. The committee also looks forward to completion of the Transit Corridor Plan, which will be the next big redevelopment effort. And hopefully, after the plan is presented to the citizens and then comes before the City Council, and the City Council agrees on some of the steps, then we can see some of the results starting to happen. And the date of the final community workshop, as I said before, for the Transit Corridor Plan, has not been set, but it will occur this fall, and the date will be announced very soon. I'm sure it will be on Channel, San Bruno Channel 1 versus being mentioned in the council meeting and the redevelopment meeting also. So I would be happy to try and answer any questions, or we will refer them to staff as necessary.
Any questions of Mr. Rico?
You're the Chair, Mr. Rico.
Yes, sir.
I can appreciate the fact that the committee is in favor of what the agency and staff have been producing and the direction that we're going with the many projects and the Transit Corridors Plan. But I notice when I look at the list of all the members, you guys are pretty well, pretty experienced in this community, been pretty involved, almost every single one of you. Is there anything else that's been sort of a theme and that you, as a group at least, would like to suggest to the agency?
Let's, well, I'll put that on the agenda for September. We have been kind of busy on a couple of the items, and we feel if we get real expanded in where items that we may be considering, we may not be doing quite as good of a result that you're looking to the committee to do. But I will ask that, and through Mark or through myself, we will respond to that and see if very possibly there's maybe one or two other items that we can start to work in, as a couple of these tend to not fade off our plate, but take less of our time.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Anything else? Well, you all do a great job, and we've come a long way, although it's hard to see sometimes until you, like you say, the facade improvement program, you can really feel and touch it. But we've come a long way in San Bruno with redevelopment. Just look at the crossing and the areas that are in redevelopment. The lack of wisdom of the state of California kind of hindered us a little bit this year because they took a lot of money, but hopefully we can build that back up again and, you know, keep going. We're looking forward to it.
One last comment. I think with the one or two open meetings that is being planned with the citizens, I think that the publicity of that gets out. If they have the turnout like they had at one of the very early meetings, they had like 90 or 100 people. If you get that many people, I think you will really be able to share with them, as will the agency, the redevelopment agency, and start getting their buy-in, because if you pick one aspect out of the Transit Corridor and say, "We're going to propose this without the bigger picture," people are going to say, "Well, I don't want that." But if they, if they see the big picture, I think it will really make your job easier because at some point, the council's going to have to say, "This is, we vote 5 to 4, or 5 to nothing, or 4 to 1, or 3 to 2, that we're going to do something." And hopefully, you'll have the majority of the city, citizens behind you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank the Advisory Committee for us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 9, public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Would someone in public like to speak on items not on the agenda?
I'm going to wear a second hat. As you know, I'm the San Bruno's trustee on the mosquito abatement, the Mosquito and Vector Control District, and I just wanted to give you a short update. Some of you may know that a squirrel in San Mateo, the city of San Mateo, recently tested positive for West Nile virus. The district continues to proactively locate and treat mosquito breeding locations throughout the county, including the city of San Bruno. Excuse me. As has been running on your cable channel 1, I want to remind all San Bruno residents of the following, as we call them, the four Ds, that they can follow to prevent mosquito breeding on their property and to prevent mosquito bites. Drain standing water around your house weekly, since this is where the mosquitoes lay their eggs. This includes tires, cans, flower pots, clogged drain gutters, rain barrels, toys, and if you have any puddles. At dusk and dawn, these are the times when the mosquitoes are most active, so limit your outdoor activities if you can, or take precautions to prevent mosquito bites. DEET is an effective ingredient to look for in an insect repellent. Always follow the label instructions carefully. And the fourth one, actually, you might say it's the fifth one, is dress in long sleeves and pants during dusk and dawn, or in areas where mosquitoes are active. To report significant mosquito problems in the county, call the district at 344-8592. And should you find dead birds or squirrels that you think might be of interest, you can call 1-877-WESTNILE-BIRD, that's W-N-V-B-I-R-D. And as things develop, I will keep the county, or keep the city informed. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you on behalf of the city for your work in the district. We'll go to item 10, conduct of business. The first item is A, adopt a resolution approving changes to various existing parking restriction zones.
Good.
Are we having some issues with our visuals?
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, utilizing the pre-established criteria set forth in the approved policy, the department present preliminary recommendation for four requests for new or modified parking restriction zones to the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee in three separate TSBC meetings. The following presentation is each of the TSBC recommendation for city council's consideration. The first item, for its council's consideration, is the request to remove existing red curb on southbound Mills Avenue, just north of San Bruno Avenue. The applicant is a local resident, wished to increase residential parking on this portion of Mills Avenue. During evaluation, department consulted with the fire department and verified that the existing 82-foot red curb is not a fire lane. The department also obtained concurrences from adjacent property owner to modify the existing parking restriction. TSBC recommends council's consideration to reduce the existing red curb from 82 feet to 30 feet. The proposed change will result in two additional on-street parking spaces on Mills Avenue. The second item for council's consideration is a request to exclude Saturday from the existing one-hour time limited parking restriction in front of Masson Mittering Hospital at 805 Masson Avenue. The owner of the Masson Mittering Hospital initiated the request to help to increase on-street parking during non-business hour in the adjacent, in the effort to increase on-street parking in the adjacent neighborhood that has a long history of shortage of parking, street parking. TSBC recommends council's consideration to modify and apply the one-hour time limited restriction between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. The third item for council's consideration is the request to install two-hour time limited parking immediately in front of Crestmore, excuse me, Crest Dry Cleaners at 705 Genovin Avenue. The applicant is the owner of the dry cleaners. The original request was to, was installation of a green zone with the intent to provide short-term parking for customer for, with quit and drop-offs and pickups. Based on the initial site observation, the usage of the adjacent on-street and private off-street parking, the department's preliminary recommendation to the TSBC was not in support of the request. However, after discussion with the applicant during the TSBC meeting, TSBC made a motion to recommend council's consideration to extend the existing two-hour time limited parking on Genovin Avenue between El Camino and London Avenue to include the requested location. The intent was to provide additional parking for customers when off-street parking or on-street parking is occupied by delivery trucks for the minimar adjacent to the dry cleaners. The proposed change for the council's consideration will result in loss of two unrestricted on-street parking spaces on Genovin Avenue. The fourth item for council's consideration is a request to install yellow zone between the two driveways to Lollaby Lane's warehouse at 1065 and 1069 San Mateo Avenue, near the North City Limits. The owner of the Lollaby Lane initiated the request to assist vendors, delivery trucks entering the warehouse. The delivery trucks to Lollaby Lane are typically in 50 feet in length, and would be considered one of the larger ones used on this portion of San Mateo Avenue. Based on initial field review, the street curb-to-curb width at the requested location is approximately 41 feet, which is not sufficient for a 54-foot truck to turn into the warehouse when both sides of the street are occupied by parked carts. The option to use Montgomery Avenue to access the back of the warehouse is not feasible due to an even narrower street width of 21, approximately 21 feet. TSBC recommends council's consideration to install yellow zone at the existing 40-foot curb in between the two driveways to Lollaby Lane, and to apply the restriction between hours of 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on any day except for Sunday and holidays. The proposed change for council's consideration will assist large trucks to maneuver to Lollaby Lane's warehouse and help to alleviate double parking concern at the requested location. The proposed, the proposed change will also result in loss of two unrestricted on-street parking spaces on San Mateo Avenue. This concludes the presentation.
Any questions from staff?
Through the Chair.
Vice Mayor.
Specifically on items 3 and 4, hitting, going to the request number 3 first, just so that I'm clear, and I went out to the four sites, and I can understand 1 and 2, on the third one, are we talking about the two-hour time limit on the business side only?
On the business side only, right in front of the 705 Genovin Avenue.
Okay, just in front of there, it doesn't go all the way to the, it's not just that one business, that's the only one spot?
Correct.
Okay, so it doesn't proceed further up the street?
Correct.
Going back, and going on to item 4, between 1069 and 1071, I noticed there's a red zone. And I don't know if it's because of the turn radius for the trucks that you're indicating. I don't know if that's an additional spot that can be gained by eliminating some of the red zone that is currently there. That's just something that I noticed when I was there yesterday. And I don't know if that was, is considered, but I can understand the need for the yellow zone between the two businesses. But I was just trying to look for additional parking, because there's quite a bit of red across the street. There's the red, I think it's Grumpy's, between that and Lollaby Lane, and I don't know if that's another space that maybe can be gained by what you're going to lose as permanent parking.
We can look into it. If I, I'm not sure if I'm, would, I can visualize which red curb that you're referring to, but I recall there's a red curb that's, it's accompanying with existing fire hydrant.
There is, you're correct. There's a fire hydrant, but there's quite a bit of space, but yes, you're correct. You can visualize very well. And the only thing, going back just really quickly on item 3, there's, you know, in going there, I noticed, and I did speak to anybody who was at the locations, there's also, once you see one thing, you're seeing another, whether it's a U-turn as they come off El Camino. they come off Al Camino, let's say they figure out they don't want to go all the way up Genovin, they make the U-turn right at Linden to get back to the L. I don't know if we ever want to consider a no-U-turn sign there, just so it alerts motorists that it's not okay, but that does happen, as it's been brought to my attention, so it's just something for thought.
Any other questions of staff?
Through the chair.
Yeah, Michael.
Okay.
Michael.
Just to, to refresh my memory, are these four, these four items among the group that was grandfathered in before that policy? So, okay, so there were, these are not going to be charged the, that application fee?
Yes. If you scored it.
Thank you.
Mr. Ibera.
Okay, the easy one, on item, item two on the Masson Avenue, so is that just a sign change?
Just a sign change.
So, to eliminate Saturday, okay. We go to item three, so the scenario is, they requested a fifteen-minute zone, and through what objections you, staff recommended a two-hour limit, so someone can park in front of the cleaners, in front, in front of speedy spot for up to two hours?
For the proposed change, the recommendation, but currently the, it's unrestricted, so anyone can park in front of the business for unlimited time.
I guess, I guess my question would be, has there been a problem with someone parking there longer than, or parking there that is not using the businesses, or is not, you know, frequenting the business, like a neighbor or something, or a, a business around the corner or something, or a resident around the corner? Has that been a problem?
That was the TSBC's assumption, and during the discussion at the TSBC meeting, also with the applicant, was, arrived to the conclusion that would help, will help the dry, the business at that location, it would be a more limited time parking at that location, that the turnover will be higher versus the existing unrestricted parking at that location.
Okay, so, not knowing what was discussed at the meeting, you know, where do you go from unlimited to a request of fifteen to two hours? Was there any discussion about thirty minutes or an hour? Because it just seems that two hours, that still, that could be a problem, where, you know, if you're going to put a sign up there that says two-hour limited parking, well, someone can actually park there for two hours if, and that's, I don't think that's what the businesses want.
It's, it's also in the discussion with the police that to help the enforced route, currently the, that would be the north side of Genovin Avenue, that's currently a two-hour limited parking, so to, without changing the existing patrol route, would have decided it's two hours should keep it consistent, it wouldn't be an additional route, a different trip for the officer to come.
All right, so for the first two blocks of Genovin, it's two hours on the north side.
And this for consistency purposes, instead of introducing another different time limited parking, this was only just a extension of the existing limited parking area with one block.
Okay, I think I can accept that, as long as there's not a uproar from the business owners or something. Summit Tail Avenue, I just think it's, it's a bigger, it's a bigger problem than just putting loading zones, I mean, and again, I've been, I know business owners out there, and I know the issues that are out there, and the only, the only law they seem to obey is not parking in the red. Every other law they break, I've seen U-turns, I've seen parking on sidewalks, I've seen parking in limited, limited time, I've seen parking, you know, overnight and extended time, and it's just too much, I know, for the police to, you know, to, to monitor. So, I'm just, you know, and I know the owner, the owner of Lollaby Lane is here, so, and, and I know what the, the consequence is, is that if you don't provide this, then they have no choice but to double park, or do what they've been doing. How do you prevent someone from, you know, what if the truck driver drives up there, and there's cars parked in the yellow zone?
During our discussion, even at the TSBC, our police department raised the issue and their concern for enforcement, that they raised a concern that they will have limited capacity to enforce at this location, like on any other location, based on their limited resources, the yellow zone, but the intent of the TSBC was to help the situation, even if it will not necessarily be a perfect solution.
I'm, I'm all for improving circulation there, but I would, I would think that, I would hope, and I know the chief is here, that if we can probably find a time, or find a time of the year where we can crack down, and just sort of get the message out that police has picked things up, and that, you know, that the, the business owners, and many of them are auto-related, and that they can know that they're being watched, because I know there are, there are some good businesses there, and there's some abusing businesses there, that, and it's just, it's, it's a constant battle, you know, day after day, year after year, and I know Mr. Graves can appreciate that, so, thank you.
Yeah, I would only assume that if we get a little aggressive for a short period of time, the word's going to get out, because it's probably the same people over and over that are using those areas, so I'm all in favor of the, the four items. Mr. Rico.
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue, I would hope that you would support the request, at least on the, excuse me, Summit Tail Avenue request, with the potential for the, the big build across the street in the next year or two from South San Francisco, and the concerns that have been voiced before, parking is going to be a continual concern, and double parking is just something that messes up Summit Tail Avenue too much. We need to keep our businesses in there, we maybe need to get in there before they start building, and tweak some of these little nuances so that it's not after the fact. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Any action?
Through the chair, I'll introduce a resolution. Can we take them all at once, or separately? I guess, yeah, the, the resolution is various existing parking. I'll introduce a resolution for the various existing parking restriction zones.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item ten B, receive a report regarding traffic speed on Susan Drive near Evergreen Bridge Apartments.
Honorable Mayor, council members, recently the council received many complaint letters about safety concern and speed on Susan Drive. At the last council meeting, Mayor Ruane directed staff to come back at this meeting with some update on the safety concern on Susan Drive. After the council meeting, the police department deployed their speed monitoring device, and in many days, and also conducted enforcement action on Susan Drive. Public Services Department conducted also a speed study on Susan Drive, and also had field review and assessment of the information and the field at this location. Based on our internal discussion between Public Service, Public Service Department and Police Department, to address some of the concern indicated through those residents and the information collected by us, would be possible many solutions to address some of those concerns, also painting a, a yellow edge line on the north side of the Susan Drive, refreshing the center line on Susan Drive, and maybe adding a white edge line on the southern edge of Susan Drive. Also, increasing the educational component, adding additional signs, speed signs, through the length of that section of Susan Drive, will help also the situation on the speeding and safety on Susan Drive. Our recommendation at this time would be for you to consider sending back this issue to the TSBC, to consider the information available, and also to conduct a public meeting, discussing and listening to the concern expressed by the neighborhood, and to, to come back with a recommendation for your final consideration.
Questions or comments from staff?
Very quick, one quick question. Director, was this information passed on to the residents that wrote or communicated to the council or staff in regards to their concerns?
Not at this time. The intent, depending on the, on your direction tonight, if your direction will be to schedule with the TSBC a public meeting, then they will be notified of the public meeting, and they will be provided with all of the available information.
I just wanted to make sure that was provided for, for them, since they took the time and effort to write to us.
Ken?
Yeah, I, I mean, just to follow up on that question, I, I would think that whenever someone makes a written request, and then we place it on the agenda, I would think that we'd respond, and at least send them a note or something saying that we're on the, you know, your issue's on the agenda. My question, my question is, do you need direction from us, or from the TSBC, to do something like repainting a center line, or to put up signs that say children at play, or radar enforced?
My recommendation at this time would be for you to send back the item with your expectation that they will consider all of the possibilities, this item will come back to you for final decision, and it's at your pleasure, if you want to indicate any of your preference tonight, of course, they will consider your direction at, during the public meeting, and their deliberation, but certainly you will have a second opportunity, and it will be your final decision.
City Mayor.
Could I expand on that answer, please? The, more specifically to your question, Councilmember Ibera, no, direction is not necessary in order to provide the basic improvements such as children at play, or refreshing line, lane markings, or center lines. The specific issue, though, that staff is attempting to address, is the residents' interest in this issue, and evaluating the broad variety of issues that are at work here, that are causing residents' concerns. So, in order to provide a more robust, if you will, opportunity for residents to articulate their concerns, and to identify any additional, more complex improvements as part of the staff's analysis, staff is recommending that this item be sent to the TSBC. But very specifically to your question, no, direction from you and direction from the TSBC, neither one of those is necessary in order to simply refresh the, the existing painted markings.
I'm just, I'm just, thank you, I'm, I'm more in the interest of time, in the interest of safety, and if an answer is that budget-wise, it's, we can't afford to do the refreshing yet, that's okay too, I mean, or if it's cheaper to do it all at once, that too. I just know from previous instances, previous cases, that especially like up in Crestmore, that when you've placed that center line in there, you know, in Rollingwood, they placed a center line, it has made a difference, and, you know, traffic calming, and so, I would think that that was, be one of the givens, is that you would, would refresh the line, and it, obviously, if there's no, if the line is pretty much gone, then yeah, it's a, it's a two-lane drag strip, you know, and, you know, it, it looks like a drag strip from the bird's eye view up here, but, no, I can understand what their concerns are, and I, I would think that we're getting more and more cases, you know, all over town on, you know, on traffic concerns and things, and it does take time, and I can appreciate that. And if we can do something that would at least improve the situation while we're reviewing the case up there, I think that, that would serve, serve the residents, just, you know, maybe better.
So, Connell?
Thank you. I wanted to know if we have any information back from Crestmore Drive and the improvements that were made there. I know every time I drive it now with the, the speed indicator, I really pay attention, and it, it really does make a difference. I notice other people have slowed down as they come to that as well, so, I'm sorry, I don't recall how much it was to install that, but maybe that should be added to this list, and I'm with Mr. Ibera, if there's, if we could paint the line now, and then go through some of these other things as we contemplate the answers, I think that'd be great.
I have to agree with everything that's said, there's some remedial stuff that we can do at this point in time, before it goes to TSBC, that would be a good thing. These residents, we've all received a big stack of letters from these residents, and it's bad up there now, and they're really worried about what's going to happen with the impending treetop reconstruction, that's going to make it a lot worse. So, the sooner we can get this taken care of, the better off we are, and with the TSBC, of course, and the public, public hearings and stuff, it'd be good to, we, obviously by law have to notify everybody, so it's good to get the word out, so, with no objection, let's get it done as soon as possible.
Okay.
Ten C, receive a report and provide direction on implementation of sustainable food packaging
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. It is a pleasure to be before you again to discuss the sustainable food packaging ordinance, and some new developments that are occurring with it. Some brief background, the ordinance went into effect on April first, 2010, after sort of a year-long lead, lead time, and a significant amount of public outreach. The ordinance does two things specifically, it bans the use of polystyrene for disposable food service ware, that includes things like cups, lids, trays, straws, utensils, plates, all sorts, anything you consider for a disposable item, food service, is included in the ordinance, and you can't use polystyrene as a component. Further, it mandates that all that food service ware be either reusable, recyclable, biodegradable, or compostable. And for our discussion later on in a few slides, the ordinance defines the recyclable plastics as numbers one through five, and those numbers are the numbers you see on different types of containers that have sort of the triangle arrows and the number in the center. After implementation on April first, staff has done a survey, sort of to see how it was being adopted citywide, and we found a couple of things. The first, which we're very happy about, is the success in virtually eliminating the use of the foam polystyrene, or the styrofoam, and this is the, sort of the poster child of what a environmentally unsustainable, unfriendly product it is, and it's nice to see that being eliminated in almost all cases. Secondly, we found that non-biodegradable straws and utensils were still in use by a significant number of food vendors, and this is important sort of for several reasons. In the development of the ordinance, and at ordinance adoption, any type of plastic utensils or straws were not considered recyclable by Recology San Bruno, our garbage company, and because they were not considered recyclable by them, they were considered prohibited by the ordinance. So, that means even So, that means even if it was a number-five plastic, which the ordinance says is okay, because it wasn't deemed recyclable by a hauler, it was banned. And so, in all of our outreach material, we said, you know, one through five plastics are okay, except for straws and utensils. For that, you need to use a biodegradable alternative. There probably are a few reasons why that is a little harder to catch on. One is that, for that reason I cited, whereas, you know, some vendors could be, even though our outreach material said it pretty concisely, they may consider that the number-five, their number-five straws, number-five utensils are good because A-number-five is recyclable. So, that may be an issue. Another issue is that biodegradable straws and utensils are still fairly costly compared to the regular polystyrene standard. And San Bruno's ordinance, like Millbrae's and South San Francisco's, is a bit more restrictive than some of the larger cities like San Francisco, where the ordinance only applies to the actual package itself. A lot of vendors in our outreach, we had to do some education that, no, it's not just the packaging, it's everything. And so, I think for those, the sort of trio of reasons is why we have a little harder time with the straws and utensils. However, a few interesting things are happening. Recology San Bruno, our garbage hauler, has increased what they accept into the blue bins as recyclable. So, now they take plastics one through seven. Polystyrene number-six plastic, not the foam, but the hard plastic that you'll see with the number-six symbol, can be placed in the blue bin. Further, all plastic straws and utensils of whatever type are now considered recyclable. This is because the facility that Recology San Bruno takes the material to considers all of that recyclable product, and they feel they can find a market for that. So, if we have this increase in what is considered a recyclable product by our garbage company, that may have an impact on our implementation of the ordinance from here on. So, listed here, it's a tentative recommendation. It's what's described in the staff report. And this is sort of the most straightforward interpretation of the ordinance, is that as the ordinance still specifically bans the use of polystyrene, it's very, very clear that it's still not to be allowed in the use of disposable food service ware products. So, that sort of stands on its own. So, regardless of what San Bruno Garbage or Recology San Bruno accepts, food vendors cannot use polystyrene. But what could also happen now is that utensils and straws made from other types of plastic, for example, polypropylene, which is fairly cost-competitive to polystyrene, would be, could be considered allowable food service ware. So, this isn't changing the ordinance. The ordinance isn't changed by this. This is just a broadening of what is considered recyclable because our ordinance is reference to specific types of plastics and what the garbage hauler accepts. So, given that, there are a few options that the council could consider and provide direction to staff on. The first bullet there is what I had just described. This has the advantage of, it has the advantage of leaving the, of achieving, helping to achieve a higher rate of compliance among the food vendors. It wouldn't, it would just involve only a little bit of additional outreach on our part to send a notification to vendors knowing that, you know, there's an increase in number of products that you are allowed to have for your customers, with the caveat that, you know, even though some of these, some of the utensils and straws are recyclable, there may be some that aren't recycled because the plastics would be commingled, the polypropylene utensils and straws would probably be commingled with the polystyrene utensils and straws because you can't tell them apart on the resorting line because they don't have the numbers to differentiate between the two. The other option is to specifically amend the ordinance if council wanted to, to keep the compostable and biodegradable straws and utensils. That is an option. A third option is, we could do some additional research to see if these items are actually recyclable. So, the ordinance says recyclable plastics. What actually happens to the smaller plastic items that are sort of the miscellaneous plastic and how they get processed? It's not entirely certain how well those items are recycled. So, they get processed, and they're certainly kept out of the landfill, at least for the time being. But because they are considered a sort of polystyrene product when polypropylene is mixed with polystyrene, and I apologize for mixing all these terms around, but when number-five plastic is mixed with number-six plastic, it's treated as number-six plastic, right? And number-six plastic generally, we don't like. So, there's a concern that you're not, you don't have a closed-loop recycling project where you can't take a utensil and turn it back into a utensil. It'd have to become something else, like a computer case or a plastic doll, and then it gets thrown away. So, that's not a, you can reuse it, but it's maybe not a closed-loop recycling. So, I'll leave it at that and be happy to take some clarifying questions here and receive any direction. So, we have those three options on the slide, and I'll stop.
How would you go about performing your research?
We would get with Recology San Bruno and make sure that we feel together that what we think is actually happening with these products, so that would involve discussions with the hauler. It would probably involve some research of some academic papers to see what actual peer-reviewed literature is, has said on what happens to recycled plastic. So, it'd be sort of a combination of discussion with some of our partners, other local agencies, and then just a little old-fashioned library work.
Okay, my personal feeling is this, is to go ahead and perform the additional research. My concern is that if they're going to start accepting, you know, six and seven or whatever numbers you were talking about there, that the stuff is really not going to be recycled other than once. And that second time around, it's going to be, you know, dumped someplace where it's not going to biodegrade and it's not going to be recycled again. So, I would guess that the research should be fairly easy because of Recology's, you know, commitment to help us out on this, and they must have done the research themselves already if they're accepting the items. So, I, my personal feeling is I'd like you to perform the additional research before we start amending ordinances or leave it alone and just have the, you know, the vendors assume certain things. I'll open it up to the council.
My two cents is I'm in favor of also a bullet point three for the additional research. I believe what the mayor had said, that it should be fairly straightforward and easy. I think Recology's done probably a lot of the legwork for us, and then we can just partner up to ensure the information, the data we have, and the decisions we're making are fully thought through.
Anything else?
Good, Chair, I think it's just confusing as hell. I think the spirit of the ordinance is that the businesses have complied. My only question is that are the big vendors, like the fast-food companies, I mean, are they, what number are they using? And can they tell? I mean, it's just so confusing. I mean, how are you supposed to expect, you know, one, a small business owner to do it after they've pretty much changed over their containers and their, majority of their utensils and things? And then now, having to really get into understanding the science of plastic, you know? And then again, how are we going to enforce it? I mean, the consumer's not out, the consumer's out there not knowing what's number-five, number-six recyclable, how many times or not. So, I think it's, until, I think the time is, the time will come, and it's been my concern with this whole green thing, is that until everyone does it, I mean, there's always going to be those, you know, certain parts of society that are going to slip through, like the grocery stores, like the big companies, like the, you know, big product companies and stuff. I mean, I went into a, I went into a back room today, and there's this huge case of styrofoam coffee cups. So, there's still a big business in that. So, that's my concern, is that we're getting into a real strict part of compliance here, and it's, you know, we're hitting, we're hitting our businesses when, you know, rest of the world is still, you know, fighting over the styrofoam.
I agree to a certain extent, but then, we established an ordinance, and the method which Recology collects stuff is, has changed. And I think we deserve it for ourselves to perform this additional research to find out what's going on. Sure, we can't do everything ourselves, but we've got to start someplace. And you're talking about, you know, why other cities are doing things and other cities not doing things. You know, we're talking to Recology now about trying to get smaller bins for garbage, because people are recycling more. That's a good thing. San Francisco has a wet garbage situation, and they're doing very well at it. And I'm talking to Recology now, or we are, about what can we do in San Bruno to, you know, do the wet garbage thing. So, you've got to start someplace. And it's made one heck of a difference, I know, in my household just in the recycling. You've got a smaller bin now for garbage and a huge thing which is filled almost all the time with cardboard and everything else, whereas before, it used to be thrown away. So, San Bruno, years ago, was at the forefront of recycling, and I think we have to stay there. So, my personal feeling is to perform additional research. But I'd like to hear from the rest of the council.
Ms. Green.
Yeah, Ms. Green, thank you. Ms. Green.
Ms. Green.
It is, it is a confusing thing for people when they go to McDonald's or whatever and get a straw, and they don't know what to do with it. So, that part is confusing, but I think as time goes on, it'll be less and less confusing, and I hope, and I'm confident, that eventually, we won't be selling those things, nobody will be buying them, and it won't be a problem anymore. But in the meantime, we need to do as much as we absolutely can. So, yes, perform the additional research and figure out if we need to mandate any changes and, or make any changes in the ordinance. Another thing we might look at doing, and this sounds kind of simple, I know, but Starbucks does a discount if you bring your own coffee mug in, that kind of thing. It occurred to me just while we were sitting here, the stores, you know, there's such a fight about the containers for bringing in, basically, you're bringing leftovers home. If people want to, why can't they bring their own containers and put their own leftovers in it? I mean, that, just another thing that we could suggest to restaurants, you know, a 25-cent discount, or you don't, whatever it is. But it's something in addition that we can add to what we're doing. But certainly, somebody out there has more information than we do, and I'm sure you can find it out. And now that we have, the library opens on Friday, you can have a little more time to do it.
Michael, anything?
Just one, one comment. You mentioned that, that having the different number, different numbered plastics combined into the same stream causes that problem where it's not a closed system. It seems to me that you can never really, even if you have all of the food vendors in the city comply with this, you're still blending in the residential garbage into that stream, and there's no regulation on that. So, it almost seems impossible to keep that stream clean, unless I'm missing something.
Well, I think as part of our research, we would, since we're looking into it, make sure that it is appropriate to accept those items even for residents to put in there. So, is it really even appropriate, even though the recycling facility is taking it, is it appropriate really to be calling that a recycled commodity? Because they'll take anything they have a market for. And so, right now, there's a market for commingled, small-plastic items. But is it, as we do this research, we determine if that is really, are we being faithful to our customers to say that this product is actually being recycled? And so, if, maybe if that's not appropriate, maybe one of the recommendations that could come back is, you know, maybe we need to amend what we take into the blue bin, potentially. But I mean, I sort of agree with you that you are setting up ourselves up for this sort of dual system, and so, we'll definitely try to clarify that when we come back. Okay, thank you.
It sounds like you, we have a consensus. Do we need a motion on this? Okay, do some research. Thank you. Are we ready for the public hearing now? Item eight, public hearings. Notices have been published, posted, and mailed. We're going to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution of intent to draft a groundwater management plan for the southwest side basin.
Honorable Mayor, councilmember, what you have before you to conduct a public hearing and to consider the resolution of intent to draft a groundwater management plan. This item was already before you. In November of 2007, the city council already took a action, approving a grant application to the Water Resource Board to fund this project. Then, in January of 2009, the department came back for your approval to award a consultant contract to Vryme, who helped the partner agencies to draft and to develop this groundwater management plan. Also, in, last year, in March, the department gave you an update on funding strategy at that time. The main purpose for the groundwater management plan really is to ensure a sustainable, high-quality, reliable water supply at a reasonable price for all of the users of the groundwater basin. In essence, the purpose of developing this plan to protect our, one of the most valuable resource, the groundwater. The funding for the development of this plan is coming from state fund, how I indicated before. The Water Resource Board approved a 210,000 grant for the development of this plan for the partner agencies. Our partners in the application were Daily City and Carl Water. Each partner agency provides in-step support for the development of the plan, which is not reimbursed by state grant. Besides Daily City and Carl Water, PUC is a very active, even if they were not included in the, in the grant application, PUC is a very active participant and partner in the development of this plan. In order for us to have a broad and collaborative approach developing this plan, the city was the lead agency for the development of the plan, reached out to many agencies to collaborate during the development. To, in order for us to have ongoing input from those agencies, a advisory committee was developed, and many of the agencies are active participants through the advisory committee. BASCA is one of the agency who attends some of the meeting. Other cities like Brisbane, Burlingame, Colma, City of Colma attend, actually, each of our advisory committee meetings. Private pampers and were invited to be part of the process, and they are participating in more or more limited way. But the private pampers from the City of Colma, they are attending some of the advisory committee meetings. And certainly, the Water Board representative is attending all of the meetings, and they are very active supporter of the development of the plan. And providing professional input and support for, for the advisory committee. You see what you have in front of you, actually, a map of the southwest side basin. This is called the southwest side basin. The northwest side basin is managed by City of San Francisco, and that is- and that is not part of this plan. Based on the 2009 information, you see that the agencies, now you can see, the agencies relying on the groundwater production, 24% of their water demand. San Bruno, this is a history of, the color didn't come out clear, but you see the history of groundwater production and the surface water and the total water consumption between '97 and 2008 for San Bruno. In essence, you can see from this graph that about half and half of the need in San Bruno is provided through groundwater production, really underlining the very importance of the proper management of this important resource in the basin. What you see, just for the clarification, if you would be wondering what that deep really mean in 2003 and 2004, that was really during the conjunctive use pilot project, when our groundwater production was much less than in other years. In the last two years, the agencies, including San Bruno, came together to start to develop a groundwater modeling to collect as much as information as possible on the data available historically and to try to project and based on the history, the future of this basin. And based on this limited, very limited information at this time, but what the data really show us, what you see on this slide, that is a negative balance between the recharge and subsurface flow and the pump quantity on yearly basis from this basin. I will just very strongly qualify in this information that this is a, based on limited information, this is the first iteration of this kind of available data. This will need to be further updated and monitored to really be able to conclude any, to conclude and to develop policies based only just on this information. How I indicated before, the groundwater is really very important for San Bruno. For all of the agencies, provide 25, around 25% of the water supply. For San Bruno specifically, even more help. As you are very well aware, the surface water is limited from PUC. And reason why managing properly our groundwater resources will become even more critical. The high quality, to maintain a high quality of the supply is very important also. And last, but not at least, is the importance of diversity, redundancy of the system. You just don't know what will happen in an emergency situation. Or San Bruno is very fortunate having this dual resource available to us to manage. And is available to us, the opportunity for some reason is more challenging provide water through the surface water connection. Still, the groundwater production is available to us. There are many threats to this important resource. Is over extraction and reduced recharge. Is the seawater intrusion, also contamination. How the basin is managed now, each agency is managing on their own, is not a broad coordination on the basin management issues. Is these actions are taken on a ad hoc basis. This plan would create that structure and also that mean how this basin can be managed on a more sustainable, consistent manner. The regulation, really managing the development of groundwater plants is under AB 3030. Is a requirement of AB 3030 for you to conduct a public hearing. If you intend, is the city intend to develop a groundwater management plan. This will be a non-regulatory planning document. But buy-in and public outreach and input will be critical for the success of the plan and strongly recommended in AB 3030. It takes little time, but I can guess what is under. I am really sorry that my department had really this challenge tonight with this presentation. What is the intent of this plan? To really establish goals and objectives for the plan. And those goals and objectives will be supported by specific programs achieving them. There are many issues developing this plan depending on difference interest by the different stakeholders in the basin. Is difference level of interest protecting the water quality? Knowing that different user has different level of interest for water quality. Some of the users, the private pompers in Colma, they are using more for irrigation, not necessarily for drinking water and dissolve, as their interest is less for quality. Cost always is a major issue for all of the stakeholders. The groundwater rights issue, recycled water, the conjunctive use is a new project for this basin. And this will be the first of the project of this kind implemented in the basin. And of course, the local control will be an ongoing challenge and issue for all of the agencies involved in the development of this plan and the management of this basin. So far, they were developed and considered and discussed difference proposal for best management objectives for the groundwater levels, the quality of the groundwater, for land subsidence, and of course, surface water and groundwater interaction. More focusing on best management practice and recommendations for recharge area. The last chapter in the development of this plan will be the governance issue of the management of the basin. There are many alternatives available to participating agencies, from the most flexible to the most restrictive form of governments. Based on discussion so far was, is under consideration, the most flexible form of governance may be entering, but certainly, this will be up to each agency to make that decision to enter based on the approved plan or the developed plan, to enter in some kind of memorandum of understanding with the other participating agencies, how this basin could be or would be managed in the most appropriate manner at this time. Depending on the development of that memorandum of understanding, the agencies can agree on some kind of form of advisory committee or how then this basin can be managed and how the plan can be implemented. For more public involvement and engagement will be scheduled public meetings. The next public, on this subject matter, the first public meeting will be scheduled here in the senior center in this room on September 9th. The next meeting will be scheduled in Daly City on September 23rd. And then, in October, without to have a specific date yet at this time, will be in South City or Colma. Then, will be on another two meeting, which the date were not defined yet. And will be the final meeting, presenting the final document. Passing this resolution, based on the water code, you will have two years to approve this plan. It is depending on your comfort and desire. Our deadline, based on our contract with the consultant, is end of this year. And our deadline with the Water Resource Board is February of next year, when this plan development should be done. And at that time, I think this date is wrong. Really meant, yes, you can go until 2012, considering the two years. But was our assumption that you will approve this plan sometime in early 2011. This concludes my presentation. If you have any question or comment.
Any questions of staff that doesn't require a PowerPoint answer? Anything?
Thank you. When the plan is complete and everyone's gone through it all, will there be an outline of, or a series of recommendations of how to govern the plan and how to govern the implementation of the plan? I hope my question's clear. Let me say this first, just for everyone's information. And this is extremely crucial. It's a long, drawn-out experience, really, and process. But this, we're coming to some very crucial policy decisions about what to do and how to work with our neighbors about our water. And it is very important to people who are listening on the TV audience. I hope you attend the meeting on September 9th. As one of our former council persons always said, without water, you have nothing. You have, you need water for everything, for life, for businesses, for your, everything. So it's very crucial how we go about governing what we're going to do with our water. Not just, it's not just up to us to decide on these things. We need to really think about how we're doing this. So again, my question is, will we get recommendations on how this is going to all work? Or how it could all work?
Is the intent and will be part of the plan to come back with a recommendation, how then the plan could be managed. Could be developed as part of the MOU, a board, joint board between all of the participating agencies and some of the private partners. Or could be an advisory committee, or could take many different form depending what would be, what will be the comfort level among all of the agencies.
Okay, but will there be a recommendation in that? I realize there will be a list of things, but...
Will be, at the end of the process, will be a very specific recommendation on what of those, in what of those alternatives will each agency will support.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Each agency has to adopt the plan, I think. This is going to have to be consensus on adopting the plan, if they're going to follow it? And part of adopting the plan is going to be how we're going to govern it.
Well, I think there's kind of, when we say plan, we're thinking, this is, we're going to do A, B, C, and D. But that's not really what this plan says, if I'm saying it right. It gives you a wide, like, here's the water, here's the things we can do with it, and here's what the state laws are going to be, and here's the data, and here's the model. If this tweaks, if you lose this, what can you do with that? Am I explaining it correctly?
You are absolutely correct, Councilmember. We'll include some of those recommendations, okay? Those are A, B, C. These are part of the plan. And to answer your question, Councilmember Ibera also, is the assumption you have to, you will approve the plan. But the agency approving the plan doesn't mean that it's mandated how you are implementing the plan. Always is a difference between approving a plan and how much will be implemented. Hopefully, most of the plan, that's the purpose of developing the plan. But will be defined, hopefully, at that phase, what will be that structure which, under which then this whole basin will be managed.
Right. It's more accepting the plan. Here's all the stuff. We accept the information. And then we have to kind of figure out, along with our partners, if we become partners, what to do with it. It's huge. It's not just us. It's the whole, there's all sorts of things going on at this stage, so...
Any other questions of staff? All right, this time we'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public wish to speak on the side of? If we close the public hearing, you'll be pre-colluded from speaking on the side of again. Action.
Move to close public hearing, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Any more discussion or action?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ruane. Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
All right, I think we're convoluted enough to get back down to where we should be. Comments from council members? I would like to thank the San Bruno Rotary, the Lions, and the Sister City Committee for the great job they did in assisting San Bruno last week in hosting 29 representatives from Narita, Japan, or Sister City. It was a whirlwind three days. The coordination by Randy Schwartz and all of the city staff went very, very well. So you're all to be commended. We've got some good reports back from Japan. Everybody made it home safe, and they're raving about all of the stuff that happened. And it didn't cost the city any money. didn't cost the city any money, so I should mention that also. Any other comments from councilmembers?
Very quick through the chair, on what the mayor just said. I know, obviously, as indicated, this was paid for by the Sister City Committee and other avenues. At times, it is, I think, a very necessary, it's a 20th anniversary celebration, I think it's been a benefit to the community and to the youth. I would just maybe put out on the table if there are some monies needed on occasion that maybe we look toward or consider the Culture and Arts Fund, that I think is utilized for these types of activities. I'm not saying it funds the whole thing, but maybe if there's some monies that are necessary to continue this program and this connection between our sister city and Narita, that we explore that avenue if necessary.
Good. Anything else?
Thank you. I would just like to say I attended a class that was given and sponsored by Basque and the San Bruno, the City of San Bruno, regarding landscaping and low water use, and there'll be another class September 11th at the Rec Center at nine o'clock. It's a free class, it's fabulous, they talk about, you know, all those gallons and gallons of water and all that money you spend on watering your lawn, there's alternatives to doing that and still have attractive landscaping. So if you're interested in that, please call the Rec Center or go online, and you can register for the class, it's well worth it.
All right, item 13, we do have a closed session. Item A, closed session to confer with legal counsel regarding Baykeeper versus City of San Bruno, United States District Court, civil case number 00753SC, California Government Code Section 54956.9A, and, and also, item B, the city manager and human resources director request a closed session pursuant to California Government Code 54957.6 regarding direction for labor negotiations with the fire and police bargaining units. Item 14 is adjournment, the next regular city council meeting will be held on September 14th, 2010, right here at the senior center at 7:00 PM. Meeting adjourned.[1786.65][1786.65]